The motion of prison center by PC River Wood. I mean, that is the seven temporary teachers. And will be released later than the end of the. Of the school year. And then also by the motion of myself accepted by. As in Harvard, the administrator was released from an administrator position. And not elected as a probationary. That was awesome.
Right, all right. Thank you, Mr. Kegel. I will read our board meeting protocol. Our session is being recorded and the meeting is open to the public and also being bright broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. For public comment tonight, public comments are three minutes per agenda item and the board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. To make comment via Zoom teleconference notified the board meeting assistant through the chat box feature. Or by using the raised hand feature for the agenda item to be addressed. You will be identified by your display name and zoom when called upon to speak. To make a public comment in person, please complete a public comment form over by the doors. Indicating the item you would like to address and give to our board meeting assistant, Ms. Bach. Email public comment is sent to the superintendent website or address 24 hours before the board meeting, they'd be posted on our website with the agenda. We have not received email public comment for tonight. Board vote and connectivity, each motion will be followed by a rule called vote for action items. And should a board member attend remotely or lose connectivity by teleconference, the meeting will be delayed five minutes. And the board regular board meetings will be adjourned by 10:30 PM.
In there, you have a. Comment, I would like to do the presentations first. Start off with the Marineland Elementary School choir.
Absolutely, it's nice to see students and parents at our board meetings. So we have Mary Pizikara from Marango Ranch Elementary School. And we have her students. Thank you for coming. And we'll make sure Ms. Bach, if you could get a couple pictures or Mrs. Porter and that'd be great. We'll send it to the Galt Herald also. Great job, students. We have a little goodie bag for you. Oh, yes. She's a retired music teacher in our district. Yes, thank you. Great job. And thank you, parents, for bringing them out on a Wednesday evening.
Yeah, parents, thank you for bringing your children. We appreciate it. This stuff kind of like we as a board, we're really kind of focusing on getting our students like the recognition they deserve. So we're kind of having some type of presentation for these students every, every board meeting. We really appreciate it. There's other administrators, hopefully you're, we'll invite your, your schools as well. The whole idea is to get this, get this back to the students, about students, we want, we want them here, we want them to know that we, we appreciate them. So, thank you very much. We'll go with the spelling bee, we got a couple spelling bee winners we want to recognize now. Then we'll have the.
All right, we do, we will start with our Marango Ranch spelling bee winner Levi Patterson. Sorry, Peterson, sorry, drum and glasses, Levi Peterson, fifth grader. Wow. And Levi, it was your second time winning the spelling bee, right? You won it as a fourth grader and then again as a fifth grader. Do you remember your winning word? Oh, wow. Yeah. Okay, at the county level, wow, when is that? Do you know, Levi? No, okay, yeah. He did a great job. I was actually a judge at that spelling bee and he did, he did a great job. So congratulations, Levi, and thank you, and thank you to your parents too for bringing you out tonight. So, yes, good luck and regional. And next we have Marco Gonzalez, a sixth grader from Valley Oaks Elementary School that won the spelling bee and he has a special story too. Come on up, Marco. So I was also able to judge at the Valley Oaks Spelling Bee and Marco's story is he has won three consecutive times. He won as a fourth grader, a fifth grader, and then as a sixth grader. So not too many kiddos can say that. Do you remember your word that you had to spell? Oh, okay. Gosh, so congratulations, honey, that was just great and we want to recognize your parents too. Thank you for bringing them him out and are you going to go to regional? You are, wow, okay, so we have to keep, we have to keep in contact, see how you guys do, both you and Levi. Well, congratulations again, honey. Good luck.
I want to add that I attended the last one we held and it is quite impressive to see all the bands come together. And all the choirs come together to perform. It is, it is impressive to see that happening all at once. So it takes a lot of coordination, a lot of work, a lot of practice to be able to pull it off. So it's if you have a chance to join. I recommend that you do. Thank you for everything you do, Ariana.
Thank you, Mary and Ariana both. Thank you. Yes, thank you. So our county office of education, they have formally approved our first interim budget that was brought to the board in November. Our county superintendent, Dave Gordon, he noted a couple of things there. First, I want to start by saying it was a positive certification. That's our goal to get positive. He did note some fund balance decreases and I would ask Nicole Lorenz, our CBO, just to briefly highlight what that means. Because I know our two new trustees, they were not with us in November when the first interim was presented. And so just a brief explanation on what that means.
So each interim adopted budget in the two interims that I bring to the board, we have to self certify. And so we certify as positive qualified or negative. And then the county concurs with us. And so this is their concurrence letter. So they're basically reiterating that they concur with our positive certification. And their bullet points are just, those are just them reiterating the numbers I provided them. And so what they get from us contains these numbers. You haven't seen a multi-year projection yet, you will next board meeting when I do second interim. So it might make a little more sense to visually see what they're talking about and where those numbers come from. But yes, they're just reiterating the numbers that are in the packet we give them.
And then the second bullet there was just noting that at the time this budget was approved. Our certificated negotiations were settled but our classified had not been settled yet, but of course that has been settled now. So that will be reflected in the second interim report that we get back from the county. Yes, so Nicole Lorenz will give you an overview of the governor's proposal from January.
Okay. Room. So in January, the governor proposed his initial proposal for the 2324 state budget. And we can go to the first slide, cry, or next slide, next slide. I gotta get in my groove again, next slide, okay. So this budget proposal kicks off the six month process of developing the state budget. And so you will, we had January's governor's budget and then May revise will happen in May. And then the legislature will adopt the budget in June. So there's three, three stages. And right now revenue conditions are particularly volatile, as we all know. And the governor's budget recognizes a budget shortfall of 29.5 billion over the three year budget window. So every time there's a budget proposed, there's three years encompassed in it, two prior years and the current year. And Governor Newsom purposely did not draw from the state's reserves. Instead, he's using things like funding delays, reductions and funding shifts to balance the budget instead. Next slide. This is the state's general fund. And so 2223 and 2324 are illustrated here. And of note is just that the total available resources in 2324 are projected to decrease by 11.43%. While expenditures are projected to decrease 6.85%. Next slide and next slide. So Prop 98 is the funding guarantee for K314 schools and community colleges. And so as we talked about the three year window before. The one, the 108.8 billion that the governor is proposing for Prop 98 is about 1.5 billion less than what 2324 projection in his last year's budget. Coinciding with that on the next slide. Is the two prior years. And so there's also adjustments to the. That's good. There's also adjustments to the two prior years as well. There's an increase for 2122, 200 million and a reduction in 2223 of 3.4 billion. Next slide. This is just a representation of Prop 98 minimum guarantee over the years. Next slide. So the reserve cap was something new that we talked about last year. When the state has a certain level of funds in their public school system stabilization account, kind of like their savings account. It triggers a reserve cap on districts. And so for us, we can't have more than 10% of an unrestricted fund balance that's unassigned or assigned. You have to commit. So last adopted budget, I brought to you a resolution that we passed to commit funds so that assigned and unassigned stayed under 10%. That's going to come into effect again in 2324 and they're also projecting probably through 2425. And I'm excited. So these are just the LCFF funding factors. You'll see more of a presentation from me next month at second interim. And so it shows you the rate of LCFF funding we get for the different grade span. The cola for next year is projected at 8.13%. There's still two data points that are outstanding to calculate the final cola. So the cola may change in May. Next slide. This is just the school services dartboard. You might hear that term if you go to the governor's budget workshop. It's kind of the, the planning factor page is a little cheat sheet and this is what we use to develop our budgets and in different capacities. Next page. So categoricals did also propose to get the 8.13 cola. Special ed is a big one. That's going from $820 this year to $886 next year. Preschool is a big one for us as well. They're in their second year of a multi-year ramp up plan. To increase services to students with disabilities and dual language learners. So they will also see an increase this year. Next slide and next slide. This is just, this is a graph showing the estimated declines in enrollment statewide. And so as we know, we heard during COVID, people left California and that's projected to keep being a trend in the state. Next slide. So as we've talked about over the last year or so, TK is continuing to be implemented. We're in the second year. So 690 million has been put into this budget for the second year of transition. And this will make students turning five. This year is February 2nd, next year will be April 2nd, so two months more of students will be allowed to come into TK. The add-on for next year is proposed at $3,042. So that's this year's rate plus the cola. And so this year was the first year we got the add-on. It's meant to help us implement the program. Next slide, and then I'm going to switch not in, in a moment to the next one. So in our last meeting, we talked about the difference between the Prop 28 music funding and the art and music instructional material block grant. So if you go to the next slide, quiet. And we talked about the differences of them and we did the, the grid and went into detail. The one thing that's new to note is that in order to fund Prop 28 that passed, which is a billion dollars to the state budget. The governor is proposing reducing the arts and music instructional block grant by 1.2 billion. And school services is projecting that of the 1.9 million that we were estimating in it. For this block grant, we should expect about one third reduction. In order to divert funds to Prop 28. So that was just the new, the new part of this since we last talked about it. Next slide. So employer contribution rates continue to rise on the purse side. Stirs is remaining the same at the 19.1%. But you'll notice that stirs, if you look over on the left side. We currently had it projected for the two out years at 25.2% and 24.6%. And as you can see, the proposed, the proposed CalPERS rates for 2324 are now 27%. And 2425 is 28.1%. For 2324, that's an increase of 1.8% over what we had in our projections currently. And then 2425 is 3.5% higher than what we had. The new rates will be reflected in second interim next, and next month's board meeting. Next slide. Based on inflation, school services projects that minimum wage will continue to rise until 2028. And next slide. And this last slide is just the certificated and classified layoff timeline. Last year, AB438 changed the layoff process for classified and kind of aligned it with certificated. So we were following the same timeline for the first time last year. And so now every, both units have to have their prelim notices by March 15th. And classified is now entitled to a hearing similar to the way the certificated was. And that's the end of my presentation. Can I answer any questions?
Okay. I just, thank you, Nicole. I just wanted to note that after the governor's budget is released, usually we hear from the legislative analyst office. They give us a analysis or a summary and what the word on the street right now is that the governor in this budget did not make enough cuts. And so they're telling us to be prepared potentially for more cuts to education to really balance the budget. So we'll see, may, there could be some significant changes with the may revise, so we'll see. Yes, I'll have Nicole introduce our transportation supervisor.
I have stopped. I'd like to introduce my new transportation supervisor, Michelle Trujillo. She started with us in August, Michelle, August of 22. And she comes to us with 30 years of experience in transportation, school districts, as well as contractors. I'll let her give her a little spiel, but I, I'm really happy that Michelle is here. So we have a transportation update for you and she's going to do the presentation.
Hi, nice, nice to be here. Thank you, Nicole. Yeah, I've worked at school districts in Santa Clara, San Jose. And recently came over from Michael's Transportation. I never worked for a contractor before. I've always been in the school district and it was a, an experience. General manager running the whole Sacramento area, but I'm glad to be here, very glad to be here. Transportation updates, I'm get the next slide, I'm sorry. Okay, this is just a list of our office staff, our bus drivers, bus monitors and our shop. This is just their names. Driver staffing shortage is that's pretty much every district. We have a driver position available on Edjoin for both districts and we are also trainees. As many trainers as we can get in and also sub-drivers are needed. So if you know anybody. We do have a bus parked on C Street, right across the street. And we've gotten at least five calls, so. After five calls, if we just get one person, it'd be great. So we're trying to get it out there every morning and pick it up in the afternoon. So driver's been helping out with that. Yeah. I'm excited. So we have elementary, we have four general education routes and two special need routes going right now. High school is the same. And so combined it's 12 routes. The high school side, our two special needs routes. We have only one special needs route going right now, so it's pretty full. We need another driver in high school as soon as possible. So we have a training that's. Starting training, I think this Monday, so hopefully that goes through. She's almost done, so. We're hoping that we can get her on board and we leave that driver with all the special needs. It's, it's pretty full on the bus. Next slide. And this is just the annual mileage for 2122. And from 2016 all the way to 222. And it is declining with enrollment not being so high. Traversa, this is what I, we're having. Traversa is our program, our software program that we use for field trips right now, not for field trips, I'm sorry, for routing. But we are going to have it for field trip. So each site will have. A person that's going to put in all the filters for the school, for that school. So if we have a high school, we'll have one person entering all the trips. Right now we have several people, we got teachers, secretaries, principals putting in field trips and it's just all over the place right now. So if we have it just for one person entering it, it's going to be a lot better. And then when they do enter it, anybody can go on there and look and see where their trip is at, if it's approved, if it's, if it's contracted out. So this is just going to relieve, it's going to be so much more efficient than what we have right now. And we are going to have training on it, March, first week of March. So we'll be, our office staff will all know it because we need to cross train. It's very important to cross train all our staff. So if one of us is out, the other, we all know what to do. So we do also have tablets that are installed. Some of the drivers are not familiar with them, so we're going to have training on that again too. And the tablets are just like GPS. So they're using their phones and we do have them already installed in the buses. And the bracket that holds them, so it's, it's pretty neat. It's just, you know, it's, it's efficient too. So we'll get on board with that pretty soon. Next slide. And so we got two grants for each district for a new electric bus, which are coming soon, I believe. I don't know if Nicole, you have information on that? Yeah. Right, ours is so we had to get an infrastructure done for the horse plugging it in. And I've been researching some for electric buses. So an electric bus, although they only go approximately maybe 100 miles per charge, which is not going to be good for a field trip. If a driver has to do a route in the morning, does 20 miles and then has to go take a field trip out to, let's say. Modesto, and we're not going to be able to use an electric bus on that because they have to come back. So right then it's going to be 100 miles. Now our electric buses are a lot safer than our regular buses, gas combustion fuel buses. I was researching it and it is a 0.03 chance of them igniting. Whereas a combustion bus, which is diesel fueled, is a 1.5%. And I also researched, we only had one school bus that did catch fire from electrical problem. And the driver was able to put that with a fire extinguisher and 20 students were on board, nobody was injured. So it is pretty safe. And it's also for the students on the bus, you know, we get those fumes from the diesel and it's just terrible. There's no fumes from electric bus. And they do, the battery lasts approximately 12 years. They are pretty expensive, about $50,000. But it saves on, it saves on maintenance, our shop. Cause there's no fluids, so it's, it's, it's a lot more efficient, more cost saving. It's great on that, on electric buses. So I'm looking forward to having electric bus on each side and see if we can get any more grants after, if it works out. And maybe even get some solar panels up in the parking lot so we could, you know, save, save on that too. And then sell whatever we don't use. Yeah, so it's going to be a good thing. So I'm just looking forward to them coming and. Excellent, next slide. So why hell, well, our trainer holds in-service meetings. And in service, a driver is required to have 10 hours of in-service meetings each year. And that's to keep up with their school bus certificate. And in-service meetings are held every. And that's to keep up with their school bus certificate. And in-service meetings are held every third Tuesday of each month at 9:00 AM and it's held in our training room. So they are offered the 10. So they, pretty much if they show up to every meeting, they get their 10 hours. And then also have staff meetings are held each Monday on my, for our office staff so that we know what's going on for the week or the day in the month. So. And any concerns, we'll discuss with that. Next slide, please. And then school buses reduce visibility. It's just was unprecedented, what happened with our flooding and how we had to cancel routes. And it was just, I've never seen it before happen. So this is just what we do to, if we need to cancel buses, this is our process we go through. So our, our local dispatcher, and this is for fog too. Our local dispatcher or drivers will survey a sample of the roads in different areas of the region and prior to 5:30 in the morning. So at that time, we will know if we have to cancel a route or due to fog or due to rain flooding. So we're pretty there. I'm there at 5 o'clock in the morning also, so I will be able to go out there too and, and check some roads. And then we'll discuss it. And if any road, any routes need to be canceled, we will be able to put that on blackboard and parent square right away for the day. And so we will, especially we'll call our CBO, of course, let them know what's happening. But this is our, our process we do for fog. And I haven't seen that much fog this year. I'm hoping that, that it doesn't happen, but 200 feet is the legal where you do not have to go out of school bus. You know, some, we would like to put at least 400 feet. 400 feet is not that far. 100 feet is 40 large steps. If you were to walk 40 steps, that's 100 feet. So if you figure you do that, you know, four times, and that's how far you'd have to be able to see, so we can cancel routes. And also I let my drivers know, sometimes it's not foggy in the town, but it is foggy out in the country, out in Thornton. And it just all of a sudden just truly fog just hits and the drivers are, are known, trained to, if that happens, they are to pull over. And this should be for your driver, for you as a, driving your personal car too. So if that was to happen and you get stuck in the fog, please pull over and turn your headlights off. Get off the road and turn your headlights off. And the reason why you turn your headlights off, because you don't want somebody following you that's going to run right into you. So when they, because you know, when you're driving and you see the taillights, you're usually following that person. Well, I'm going to follow this person. Looks like he's over where he's going. So that's what happened. We had an incident when I worked in Visalia and we had that really thick truly fog that's really, really bad. And a driver was, two drivers were going on a field trip down Highway 99. Well, a person decided to drive drunk, hit another car and it was a 99 car pileup on Highway 99. Our bus drivers, and what they're also told is to keep your window, side window open. I know it's cold, put your heaters on, keep your windows open. The first driver heard the accident, heard the tires squealing, pulled over, got over. The next driver seen that driver pull over, pulled over and they came within inches of each other, but they didn't get caught up in that accident and they were rewarded from the CHP. You know, they were full with children. So it's a good thing to keep your window open, even if your, your personal car, keep your window open a little bit, just so you can hear, if you hear anything on the highway. Because you won't know anything until you're right up on that accident and it's very dangerous. So our drivers are trained really well. So I remind them what's they need to do. So. That's our winter weather. Next slide, please. I think that's it. That's it. That's the end. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, thank, thank you. And I'm glad to be here servicing and help. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming out tonight. We know you get up very early. So go, go, go home so you can be back at 5:00.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'll turn this over to Cleo D'Orno Anguiano, our curriculum director.
Thank you, Lois. We have shared with you before that we administer the MAP, the Measures of Academic Progress to all first through eighth grade students in the area of reading and math. MAP results indicate student achievement in the moment or status and growth over time. We use MAP to determine and monitor reading comprehension and math skills. And in combination with other data points, we are better able to determine learning patterns. I'm going to say that one again. The goal is to determine learning patterns as well as to reflect on the degree of effectiveness of specific strategies and core routines. So our practice is dependent on specific strategies that we implement along with core routines when delivering instruction. Know that our administrative team has done a great job of supporting staff with the analysis and reflection of data sets for their grade level at their school. Our LCAP metrics include a MAP growth goal of 5% from winter to winter with student cohort. A cohort is a student groupings. So we will highlight for you tonight the grade levels by district and by school that met or exceeded that 5% growth target. And up on the screens, you see some of the data sets. District-wide, grade three, we exceeded the target, so we grew by 11 points. In their reading again, district-wide, fifth grade plus five. District-wide, area of math, second grade plus 15. Grade three plus seven. Grade seven plus five, grade eight plus eight. So the greatest growth we saw was in the area of math, second grade, district-wide. If we take a look at Greer, and I apologize, I, student groupings. The, the way we look at winter to winter, we look at the previous grade level and then we look at the current level of the same group of children and we determine the, the growth. So that's why you see that color coded, although it's, it's not very clear on the, on the screen. You can see that we look at first grade, winter 2022, we look at the same group of children, winter 2023, and then we determine the growth. Okay, so moving on to Greer in the area of reading, grade three, a plus 13. The area of math, grade two with plus five, grade four, plus 11. Greatest growth at Greer was with third grade in the area of reading. For Lake Canyon, we have grade three with plus 14, grade five, plus 11. Grade two, plus 10, grade four, plus nine. The greatest growth we saw at Lake Canyon was in the area of reading with third grade. Marenca Ranch in the area of reading, grade three, plus 25. Grade five, plus 11. In the area of math, grade two, plus 23. Grade three, plus 22. Grade five, plus five. At this moment, I feel like we need to ask Mrs. Porter about math and, and what core strategies and routines they're using. I do want to highlight that at Marenca Ranch, we saw the greatest growth in the area of reading in third grade. So something, by now you're probably noticing that I keep saying third grade a lot. So something is happening. Possibly different, again, think of learning patterns, strategies and core routines. So what core routines is third grade using district-wide that appear to give us these gains? At River Oaks in the area of reading, grade six, plus eight. In the area of math, grade two, plus 12, grade three, plus 16. At River Oaks, the greatest growth we saw was in the area of math, grade three, again. At Valley Oaks in the area of reading, grade three showed plus 15, grade five, plus five. Grade two, plus 20 in the area of math. Grade three, plus nine, grade six, plus 10. The greatest growth at Valley Oaks was in the area of math in second grade. And then at McCaffrey, we saw in the area of math, grade seven with a plus five and grade eight with plus eight. Nice to see that because it's been a while since we have seen that kind of growth in the area of math at McCaffrey. So the greatest growth for McCaffrey was in math, grade eight. Do you know that, again, the importance of, of these data is not really to look at the numbers because the numbers are just numbers, right? So it's, it's the administratives, the administrators who look at these numbers with their staff and they try to recreate a picture of what took place. It's important for us to see what worked. Not just to obtain that plus five or meeting the target is not necessarily the ultimate goal. In order for us, for us to improve our practice and to give children what they need and to continue with that growth pattern, we really have to be clear on, again, learning patterns across grade levels and across the district. And we really need to know what specific strategies were used and what core routines are consistently used in certain classrooms that are giving those levels of a double-digit growth in certain grade levels at certain schools. So with that, any comments, any thoughts? It takes a lot to get the results that you're looking at.
I just had one question. So between, it looks like it, it wasn't universal, but it definitely seemed like there was a trend that something happens between third and fourth grade. And so I was wondering, I imagine there's several factors, if you could share some of the factors that impact sort of that, that change between the third and fourth grade.
So the most obvious one is that in the primary grades, kinder through third, you're learning to read, you're learning how to use those skills. Fourth on, you're really reading to learn. And not only that, the other obvious factor is that you go from a class of 21 to now a class of 30 to 32. So it's, it does make a difference when the class size increases. Also, keep in mind that the current fourth grade probably has had the most inconsistent path. They were the, the group of children who didn't really finish kinder. They didn't come to school in first because it was online. They came back to us, I'm sorry, it was started in first grade. They came to us in second grade. They, last year it was third and it was still somewhat inconsistent because you probably remember the, the, my gosh, what did we call it when children were out?
Walkouts and.
Yes. So there is a, a lot of gaps for the children in fourth grade. So tho- those right now, I would say that group of children is what we have talked about. Trying to identify it. Okay, so what did they miss and what did they need? How do we give it to them? So it's, it's, something has shifted, but that particular group is the children that has been impacted the most. Because they, that foundational reading that all children should have, especially in first grade, they didn't get it. So it's, it's interesting that that's what caught your attention. That is what caught our attention. It's, it's across the district and we're still trying to figure that one out.
I can share too. I debriefed with the principal this afternoon after she met with her teaching staff. They had their staff meeting on Monday and they went through their data reflections and her fourth grade team came to her and they were very concerned about their scores. And they had some really honest conversations about maybe what we've done in the past is not working for this group of kids because of what they, this group, experienced since first grade. And that maybe they need to look a little bit at what some of the strategies that third grade uses, maybe some more small group instruction, things like that to meet the needs of, of this group because they seem to be struggling more than some of the other kids. And when you look, you look at what they've gone through, it's, it's really not a surprise. And so I, I think all of our staff, the teachers, administrators, classified staff, it takes everybody to teach and, and move these students. And we are starting to see some good growth, definitely have some work to do. But we're just, you know, small gains as we're, we're just looking for 5% each time to, to get them to that 60th percentile. And they, we will be doing on March 6th is a professional development day for teachers. In the afternoon, we will be giving teachers some collaboration time where they, all first grade teachers in the district will get together and collaborate, all second grade. We'll have some celebration time for them as well. We want to celebrate their great work that they've been doing. And so have some embedded time for them to plan and collaborate with each other on that March 6th.
I'd like to add that also for fourth grade, they were learning how to read in a digital format. That is, the strategies that a child uses to become an effective reader are very different when you have a hard copy in front of you. So it's, we really need to rethink about how, how do these children learn first, right? That, that initial foundation, it wasn't on print. So a lot of the strategies that we expect, such as children going back and rereading, didn't really happen and doesn't really happen when they read something on a Chromebook or an iPad. So that the brain reads differently when it's on screen versus on paper. So there's a lot of factors that are contributing to what you see in fourth grade. Thank you.
Yes, and I, before the donations, I would just, I want to highlight a couple of retirees. So we have Kimberly Silveira, teacher of 21 years in the district that will be retiring on, in June. And also Patricia Solder, she's retiring after 18 years in the district. So long time in education and we thank them so much for their service. They will finish out the year with us, but they are moving on to the next stage in life.
Mr. Kegel, could you please put your microphone on?
Hello, there you go.
Thank you.
And then I also will highlight a couple of donations. River Oaks PTA donated $2,007 for site use. And Valley Oaks, El Rodeo donated 125 for site use.
All righty. Moving on. I need to get a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Casey, Tracy, sorry. Got you a second?
Okay, is it on? Okay. So I just wanted to update the board. So after the last meeting during our procedures meeting, there was some dialogue between the attorney and myself regarding AB 992. So I wanted to let you know that I had sent over my analysis to Lois of that. And she forwarded it to the attorney. So my understanding is it's under review currently. And so if there's any changes that happen to result from that, I imagine will come back to the board. So I just wanted to update everyone that that had, had transpired. So, thank you.
Thank you, Annette. Okay, getting back, so we have the motion by Tracy. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Catherine.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number 212413, seconded by Catherine Harper. Wesley Kegel?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Annette Coonsey?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, we'll move on to item number 212.415. The board consideration, well, actually a board action regarding student expulsion, number 2223-01. Just go ahead and get a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve 212.415.
Thank you. Did I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number 212415, seconded by Annette Coonsey. Wesley Kegel?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to 212.416, I need to get a board action regarding student expulsion number 2223-02. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve 212.416.
Thank you. I need a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number 212416, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Wesley Kegel?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Annette Coonsey?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries to accept the expulsion panel recommendation. That also goes for item number two, one, two, four, one, five.
Then moving on to two, one, two point four, one, seven. That's another. Board action regarding student expulsion number twenty-two dash twenty-three dash oh five. Can I get a motion?
I make the motion to approve item two, one, two dash point four, one, seven. Board action regarding student expulsion number twenty-two, twenty-three dash oh five.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Coonsey to approve item number two, one, two, four, one, seven. Expulsion panel recommendation seconded by Tracy Skinner, Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to item two, one, two point four, one, eight. Support consideration of approval of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three comprehensive school safety plans. For Lake Canyon, Marengo, River Oaks, Valley Oaks, Greer, McCaffrey. And. Fair sight.
Okay, there you go. And you have the safety plans that, that the principals submitted. They're all in your board packet. For ed code three, two, two, eight, oh, and three, two, two, eight, nine point five, provide the district and schools directions to develop. Comprehensive school safety plans under the guidelines from the California Department of Education. In your safety plans are all of the required sections are included. There are also several recommend, recommended sections that we have historically included. As well as sites have also put in some specific information just to their sites that they've also added that. Each of the school safety plans were developed in, in collaboration with their school site council and the school site councils. Also approved the schools, the safety plans as well. There, there is additional pieces to the safety plans that you won't find in the published version. And those are the disaster procedures, routine, emergency, crisis, response plans and procedures like fire. Lockdown and active shooter conditions. Those are confidential and they're kept on site. At the schools and at the district office. And every year, our administrators work with GALT PD. They do come out and actually attend some of the drills that, that for each school site. Give their feedback. They look at the school site. And they look at the safety, you know, the fencing and everything and they give recommendations. And also, we also work with our administrators, the administrators work with their staff. Every year to talk about the safety conditions and safety needs of their schools. Wanted to just to a couple of other things. Let's see, the, the fire inspections are also completed annually and our fire extinguishers. Are also checked and updated annually. I wanted to just draw attention, fair sight. It's a new elementary school this year. It's a little bit smaller than the other safety plans, but. Cool Jee did a fabulous job and so there's not as much data, but as you know, as we keep going. It will grow a little bit. The one part that I did want to kind of highlight on our safety plans is the school resource officer. I wanted to give you an update. They are in, our school resource officer is so important to our school district. And the purpose for our school resource officer really is to promote a positive and safe school culture. And really a focus on the social, emotional and the positiveness. I actually met with Officer Valdez. She's a very young school resource officer, just wonderful. And I actually met with her today at. Greer Elementary School and she highlighted her plans. She's only been, I think, on the job about three weeks. But I kind of outlined in the safety plans, the four roles. It's, you know, and you know, kind of informal counseling, you know, working with students, working with staff. On campus interventions, they do home visits, resources and services. And last but not least, of course, the law enforcement. But she has plans. I'm not sure if she's met with every principal. But she will be visiting unless she, you know, house is out on a home visit or at a SARB meeting. She's going to be visiting every school site every day. Not every school site, but like two school sites a day every week. And she's, her purpose, I think tomorrow she'll be at Greer. She's going to walk through the classrooms. She'd actually like to. Maybe go in if teacher's invited. I think she's going to go in and maybe just present to students, maybe play a game with them. Oh, she is, you know, I shouldn't even get to that part. That is just absolutely is fantastic. Oh, she was, so she has. Great. I know that, you know, but she still will be at McCaffrey during lunch. Okay, so she'll be at McCaffrey during lunch. Joshua, you start going to miss out on that. I just, I just felt it was really important. I wanted to give you an update on that because really our. Our school resource officer needs to, is a valuable resource and I'm looking forward to it. And. Also for fifth, sixth graders building that relationship when they go into seventh grade. So do you have any questions about the, the school safety plans that I can answer?
I had some comments and then a question. First, thank you for this. It was really neat to read through the different cultural aspects of each school. I thought that was fun to read that. And then. It would be neat. I know you're talking about bringing more people here to actually have the resource officer. As well. And then I just had one comment with regards to the pandemic flu response. I know this is. My understanding is this is longer standing language. But I think the thing that sort of popped out to me was the school closure. And so. I don't know if there's a way to make this paragraph, you know, kind of knowing what we all know now with regards to kind of like the impacts of school closures. When you see it there, it's sort of like the first thing on the menu, you want to grab it, but maybe can it be more general? Like, you know, we will consider applicable public guidance and, and existing statutes and determine the. Course of action to be taken and then, you know, provide that notice as much as, as quickly as possible or whatever that's similar language there.
Yeah, I appreciated your questions that you had brought up because then, you know, some of this, it's been, it's mandated. And we've been using the same language. And so that brought me to kind of research to see, well, is this still updated language? And it is, and this is prior to COVID. COVID was kind of an emergency pandemic and mandate. So it had. The pandemic, the pandemic for COVID had a lot more stricter guidelines. But prior to that, at least to the time that I've been in, in GALT, we've had two other different kinds of flu outbreaks. And so I look back at our safety plans and then I also looked at some of the records that I have in the last training that I had. With the SAT County Pub Department of Ed was two thousand nineteen, right? To the same school year before we closed. And the information that's in the, the pandemic, the, in the, it's all still relevant. And it is still our, it's our consistent guidance. However. You know, the part, you know, well taken, you know, about the school closure being, you know, first, I did when I. I did look it up though, and it, and it does say. So regardless of whether we have it or not, it is per California Health and Safety Code. It provides local officers with the authority and responsibility to control communicable diseases and take whatever steps necessary. To prevent the spread of communicable disease. So if, if the CDPH and SAT County Public Health, if they did a mandate. We would be subject to that mandate and need to prevail school closure. But even during the pandemic for COVID, I believe we didn't, we closed probably less than five classrooms. And those were special education classrooms that had very few students. We really didn't experience class closures and it was more stringent. It was like three students in a class within fourteen days. We didn't close then. We didn't experience luckily a school closure, but. Definitely, I think that maybe after, you know, when, when we're looking at, at our safety plans for next year. I would work with Superintendent Yant. We can look at the way it's worded. Because, you know, it may, even if it doesn't say that in the safety plan, we know that we're still accountable to the guidance from. California Department of Public Health.
And that's interesting because you said the schools weren't closed, but. I thought they were closed, but I think what you're saying is they're not closed completely.
No, you know what? What I meant was is when we, when we opened and then the pandemic and there were the restrictions in place when you had outbreak cases. There were cases where if you had a certain amount of students, I think it was ten percent in the school. We would have had to school closure. Now, the year that we were closed, that was kind of a state mandate. That was, that's not even addressed here. But you're right, I, I would be more than happy to take that in consideration with Superintendent Yant and reword it. But it, I, I was glad to find because principals had asked the same question. Is that pandemic information still, you know, current and updated? And it is for a general.
Yeah, we did a little research. It is, the pandemic flu response is an area that is recommended. It's not one of the state requirements. It is the same language that we've had for a very long time prior to the COVID pandemic. But it's something we can consider if that's, if the board, if you wanted to take action on. The, the safety plans with the recommendation to reword that either. I think, and then I think your point was that it was the first bullet, school closure, the very first. First item on here or rewording it similar to Donna, you read a good paragraph on kind of summarizes. We are held accountable if, if the county. You know, if we have to turn in data on whatever the pandemic might be at that time, we are required to do that. But there is some different language we could look at if the board feels that. They would rather have the school closure wording taken out of there. Again, we do have some leeway. We have some flexibility because it's not, it is a recommendation. So I would take your direction as a board on what you would, what you would like us to do in that area.
Any questions?
I'm wondering, so then at that point, would we revisit, you're saying we would revisit the issue? Like, would we have some time to come up with some language that we might recommend?
Well, we already time crunch to get these approved. That we, we do, but what the board could do is approve. The safety plans with the recommendation to look at how we could reword this, similar to what. You know, Donna read off, we've been looking at a couple of different things. I think we could meet the recommendation with taking that. Those words, school closure out. If you can, that's what the board feels.
So when I'm reading this, it's basically the way I was taking it was it's saying that if we had to close a school. That we would give as much notice as possible.
Yes.
To the public.
That's exactly.
It's not really stating.
The reason why.
Like the reason why, which is if it came to that point. The plan is to try to give the public as much notice as possible, not necessarily stating.
But it could also be for safety reasons.
Yeah, so with any school closure.
Electrical, power outages. No, safety issues.
This one is specifically under the flu pandemic flu response.
Yeah.
But it's, it is just saying that we would, the superintendent designee would give as much notice as possible.
Yeah.
If we had to have a school closure.
Cause that's how I'm.
If you had a school closure, you would notify.
If not really stating. Yeah, that's the first we would, you know what I mean? Just if it came to that.
Not necessarily the first course of action.
Yes, it was just if it came to that course of action, we would want to give as much notice.
Yeah.
Mine was more of a perception, like people seeing that and thinking, oh, I choose that. Right, right. But I am also, okay, I mean, I'm just one person and that was just my input. So I'm comfortable with, yeah. Yeah.
So. Do you want to go ahead and approve? Are we talking about approving this and then maybe having Lois and her team go back and clarify?
Yes, so I, I think you either approve as, as is, or you approve with. The team making some adjustments to that first paragraph.
I'm comfortable with either. I mean, I'm comfortable approving it and then moving forward, looking at the verbiage just because. Okay, we are on a time crunch and it's not saying that that would be our first. Okay, of action.
We could do that. We'll definitely note that we will. Bring a different type of language, maybe even a couple of options, you know, for next year for that, because it is some, it's in all of our. Our safety plans, it's the same. So we'll do that if that's the direction.
I'm comfortable with that. Yeah, I like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right.
Any other questions on or directed to the, our schools? Okay, thank you.
No, thank, thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, I know it's a lot of.
Lot of work.
A lot of work.
So you know their questions, comments? Can I get a motion for? Two, one, two point four, one, eight.
Can make the motion to approve two, one, two point four, one, eight.
All right, thank you, Annette. I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Coonsey to approve item number two, one, two, four, one, eight, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on. Two, one, two point four, one, nine, board consideration approval of resolution number nine. Resolution to reduce or discontinue particular kinds of service, certificate layoffs.
All right, thank you. I had asked Kawhi, I wanted to start by sharing a slide with you, a visual of our declining enrollment. You have seen this before. The last time we showed the board, this was in the November first interim budget. And this is not new. We've been talking about it for at least the last five years, our declining enrollment. You can see that. Since two thousand seventeen, our enrollment has declined by almost three hundred students. And as Nicole showed you tonight too, she showed a snapshot of declining enrollment projected in California. I had a, a meeting with Craig Hoffman, city developer this, this week and just to review. The residential developments in our community and it's still really slow. The, the home growth, the permits pulled last year. Was below their projection. And the, the growth between now and this summer is, is, is pretty minimal. Some of their smaller projects, they're hoping the homes will be sold, but some of the larger projects in our community like Liberty Ranch or Simmerhorn. That would really bring some kids or some potential students and families to our community, just they're not there yet. And so. I wanted to also share that the majority, there's been a big hit to our middle school. Decline enrollment in two thousand seventeen, there were nine hundred and thirty students at McCaffrey Middle School. They're down by almost two hundred students. They have seven hundred and forty-seven students now and. Looking at the level, looking at the number of fourth, fifth, sixth graders we have that will be going up to the middle school the next few years. We don't predict that to change. So while it's as difficult as, as reductions are very, very difficult, it's the last resort. We are recommending to the board based on enrollment that we reduce. Three single subject teachers at the middle school. With the reduction, it would put class sizes. Meeting the state average of around thirty students. Right now. Our classes at McCaffrey are extremely lower than that. Some are as low as seventeen, eighteen students in a period. We also are recommending reducing one school psychologist. We hired a fifth psychologist this last year using one-time funds. And as we know, one-time funds are being spent out and we are not anticipating, the governor has already told us, we are not going to be receiving any additional one-time funds. And we have to spend all of our ESTR funds this next fiscal year. And based on our enrollment, again, four psychologists would keep us at the ratio of students to psychologists at the state average. Very, very difficult. The recommendation has taken a lot of thought and research. We've taken into consideration the fiscal responsibility of the district. And the need to right-size staffing to match the number of students. We've been able to sustain. The level of teachers that we've had the last five years. I would say a big reason of that is because of the additional funding, the one-time funding we've had. The last few years and it's. It's come to the time to really kind of right-size based on knowing where we're at and that we're not growing with kids.
Questions, comments? I know, I made a note here too to clarify that these services are being cut due to attendance rates.
Yes.
And Wes, I would like to add that this resolution is not a reflection of the dedication and the contributions of these teachers. We really are thankful for their commitment. To our children.
Alrighty. If no more comments, questions, can I get a motion or the resolution number nine?
I'll make the motion for the resolution number nine. Two one two point four one nine.
Awesome, thank you, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Casey.
Thank you, I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two one two four one nine, seconded by Casey Raboy, Wesley Kegel.
I.
Annette Coonsey.
I.
Catherine Harper.
I.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, moving on. Two one two point four two zero, board consideration of approval of resolution number 10. Resolution to reduce particular kinds of service and abolish classified positions due to lack of work or lack of funds.
So we are facing the same situation with some classified staff. Most of these positions are vacant, some have been vacant for a while. Whether we just haven't been able to fill them or we've. The position was vacated a while ago and we just did not officially give the position to the board. A few of these positions have been funded with one-time funds as well, or these positions were hired due to COVID. Especially in the area of health. We brought on additional health assistants that we feel. Now that we're out of the pandemic, we will not need next year. And then some of these positions too are based on student needs, one-on-one type situations and we just, we have to be prepared. If the student need is not there, that we might have to reduce, reduce staff and now as Nicole mentioned. Now that classified staff are on the same layoff schedule as certificated. We can't wait until May or June like we used to with classified staff, we have to bring it to the board now and at least notify these employees. That it could potentially happen.
Questions?
So for the ones that you said. Is based on student need, like the one-to-one? They have to get the notice, but then if the need was there, they could apply for the position.
Yes, they would, they would stay in the position if the student need was there.
And these positions, the, the, the ones that it does affect this, I think out of all of them, there are six. They're immediately placed on a layoff and so they will be called back as soon as a position opens. For example, if it was special education, you know, when we have a vacancy, they would be called back immediately, they wouldn't need to reapply.
More questions, comments? And then, and we will go with, can I get a motion for two one two point four two zero, resolution number 10?
I'll make the motion for two one two point. Four two zero, resolution number 10.
Thank you, I'll go ahead and second that.
Thank you, I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two one two. Zero, seconded by Wesley Kegel, Casey Raboy.
I.
Annette Coonsey.
I.
Catherine Harper.
I.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for that, moving on. Two one two point four two one, board consideration of approval of agreement. Between. Elementary Faculty Association and Gulf University School District. Regarding Article Five, Hours and, and Article thirteen in class size.
Yes, thank you, we have negotiated some changes to the collective bargaining agreement in the areas mentioned. I would like to highlight for you just a summary of some of the items, the tentative agreement is attached, it has been ratified by G E F A. What we did was we included both articles for you and we left highlighted in yellow some of the changes. And then we have the current articles for your backup as well. Some of the significant changes on the first page for class size. We did agree that class size would not exceed 18 students in special, special day classes, if they were to exceed 18, they would be. Receiving the class size overage stipend. We also agree that in a self-contained special ed classroom, if there's more than three grade levels, there will be an additional instructional assistant hired for support in that classroom. We also added on page two, this is new. If class size overage. If a primary class goes over 21, if an intermediate goes over 30 students due to. Students mainstreaming in to general education. If the teacher was not already receiving the class overage stipend of $150, that teacher would receive the stipend as well. And then moving on to hours, the most significant changes here is that the middle school will be receiving a passing period before lunch. They already have a passing period after lunch, but we will add a passing period before lunch and we just outlined. What a morning relief period is. Middle school teachers will now have either a prep before lunch or have an early lunch, so that way they have an identified morning relief break.
And I, I made a note, I was wondering about that, so does that mean? They get the early lunch and then during their other lunch, that's when they get their prep?
Yeah, they would have their, because if they have, if they have the later lunch. Then we need to make sure they have their prep between first and fourth period or first and third period, so that way they have what could be considered a morning break. If they have the early lunch, they're okay, because that's, that can be considered the morning prep, morning break, and then they could have prep after lunch. So that's just making sure. That they have a break. Something we also changed for independent study contracts. We agreed that if an independent study contract, if it's for more than five days. The teacher would be compensated for an additional hour of adjunct duty rate, that is new. And we also. Negotiated that our school psychologist and our district nurse. Can flex up to five non-student workdays, that is in an agreement with their principal, they would have to. Ahead of time, make that agreement with their principal and that's so they could work on, on reports.
You have a question? What is the preparation teachers, what is a preparation teacher?
Oh, that is, they provide through their services with students, our music teachers and our P E teachers. They are serving students and during that time, the teacher has prep. And so they're considered a preparation teacher, so that we just, we clarified how many minutes a week, they would have their own prep time. And those were the. I would say those are, I mean, there's a few other slight changes, mainly just some wording. I think our G E F A negotiating team and our management team working together to. Get those two articles updated. And board approval is, is recommended.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, seeing none, we'll go, can I get a motion for two one two point four two one?
I'll make the motion for two one two point four two one.
Casey?
I'll second.
Annette?
Yes.
Thank you, I have a motion from Casey Raboy to approve item number two one two four two one, seconded by Annette Coonsey, Wesley Kegel.
I.
Tracy Skinner.
I.
Catherine Harper.
I.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on, two one two point four two two, the. Board consideration approval of general education teacher job description.
Thank you. It is our goal to routinely revisit protocols, plans, postings to ensure that everything is aligned to our district goals. And to ensure accuracy and to ensure that everything's up to date. We bring to you an updated teacher job description, which better reflects the job responsibilities of all teachers. Regardless of grade level or assignment. We currently have job descriptions for preschool teacher, for kindergarten teacher, for primary teachers, for intermediate teachers, for seven, eight teachers, for K six teachers. Spanish teachers, physical education teachers, et cetera. And a few of those job descriptions are. Are very old. So the, this teacher job description that you have in front of you will support a more efficient way, way to post for vacancies. Because it will eliminate the need to bring to you a new. Job description every single time. We have the ability to expand the services that we provide to children. So a teacher's a teacher's a teacher, the difference is the assignment and the credentials behind it. So this, we hope will again be a, a more efficient way of, of really quickly providing. More services to children regardless of, of what we're able to do at that time, so board approval is recommended.
Any questions? I'm seeing none, can I get a motion for approval of the general education teacher job description?
I make a motion to approve two one two point four two two, approval of general education teacher job description.
Thanks, Annette, I'll second it.
Thank you, I have a motion from Annette Coonsey to approve item number two one two four two two, seconded by Wesley Kegel, Tracy Skinner.
I.
Casey Raboy.
I.
Catherine Harper.
I.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, moving on, two one two point four two three, board consideration of approval. Of arts, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant plan.
Okay, we're back on topic again. And so we've talked a lot about this block grant and one of the requirements of it is to have a board-approved plan. And so, behind the board item here is the template. That DTS provided, it's just a simple template of each section and how you could spend it. And the years you could spend it and we just, we put in the numbers, so as discussed in the board report in February. We discussed doing the textbook adoption for next year, working on that. And then on the second page, we also talked about additional. Music instructional materials, instrument repairs and replacements for each year that the grant is. Available. And then the last thing we talked about in the board report in February was the purchase of the bilingual and culturally diverse books for the classrooms and libraries. And so it just goes through and does a total and does the summary at the bottom, as we just discussed, we will have a change in the amount. We just don't know what that is yet, when they switch over to pay for Prop 28.
Okay. Any questions?
So, and I think you already mentioned this, so when they do make that change. This, you'll come back with a revised plan, is that how that works? Yeah, thanks.
And as I was saying, we're just looking at this plan. Pretty good, it's a pretty good plan. So my understanding is correct, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. We plan on spending 50,000 each of those years for annual purchases of musical instructional materials? So this is, that money's gonna go towards the actual music program.
Yes.
For repairs, instruments.
Yes.
And then the twenty-three, twenty-four, it's gonna go for bilingual. Purchases of books and supplies, just the one year. Okay.
Yeah, they can outfit each library that you.
Excellent. Any other? Questions, comments, clarification, seeing none, can I get a motion for two one two point four two three?
I will make the motion for two one two point four two three.
Alright, thank you Catherine. You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Casey.
Thank you, I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two one two four two three, seconded by Casey Raboy, Wesley Kegel.
I.
Tracy Skinner.
I.
Annette Coonsey.
I.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Moving on, two one two point four two four, board consideration of approval of the. Two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four E-rate service provider.
So background for our new board members, so the, the federal government has a reimbursement program called the E-rate program. And school districts and, and libraries are allowed to apply for this funding. And they have category one, which helps you pay for internet services, wifi, things like that, and then category, category two is available in certain years. And it allows for more major things like network upgrades and things like that, so this year. We applied for category one for our internet services and usually you don't have to do that every year because you usually sign a multi-year contract. And so what happens is we have a consultant that assists in the bid process and helps us write the RFP. We go out to bid, this year it was for dark fiber for our internet and. Once the bids come back, we do the reviews, that's what you'll see here, is the bid evaluation sheets and we score each. Each bidder and then we decide on a vendor. And so in this case Comcast was the only one that came back with an actual dark fiber quote, the other two did not, they provided a quote for. Similar services, not what we necessarily wanted. And so then the E-rate proposal for Comcast is in here. As well as the contract. And so this requires board approval so that we can go into contract with Comcast for five years to provide the dark fiber. For our internet services district-wide. And thanks to Min and my fiscal supervisors Brenda, they work a lot with the consultant to get this done throughout the year.
Anybody have any? Questions? Comments? If I understand, this is Min, right, you look really into this and did you do diligence?
Min's in charge, fee rate.
Yeah. Alright, with that being said, I will make the motion to approve two one two point four two four. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Casey.
Thank you, I have a motion from Wesley Kegel to approve item number two one two four two four, seconded by Casey Raboy, Tracy Skinner.
I.
Annette Coonsey.
I.
Catherine Harper.
I.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Moving on. Onto two one two point four two five, board consideration approval to dispose of surplus vehicle through a public auction.
So disposing of surplus items requires board approval. And we've surplused two other vehicles in the last year and a half, they're very old vehicles that have just been sitting over in the transportation yard. They're too old to fix, most times there's not parts available anymore. This one, you'll see, if this is approved, we'll go up for auction tomorrow, it's very rusty, it's just, you know, it's not something you, you drive around anymore. And so what happens is we go for public auction on what's called govdeals.com, so once it's approved. Then tomorrow I go on and I post it and it runs for a month, this notice that's behind here gets posted at all of our sites. And then the bidding stays open for about a month and we've been very successful, the last two have been purchased by kind of like. You know. Car junk place, you know, looking for parts and things like that, and so it's been a pretty streamlined process for us.
And then earlier today, this is actually an F-150, so it's the full-size Ford, so.
It's an old maintenance truck and we have not used it for quite a while, it's, what is it, year, 1990? Yeah, it has more rust than.
Than anything.
Anything else.
There are a little swimming pool in the back from all the rain in January as well, so, yes.
So. Anybody have any questions, I haven't seen none, can I get a motion? To dispose of the surplus vehicle through a public auction?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Catherine, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Who wants it?
Tracy.
Tracy, alright.
Thank you, I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two one two four two five, seconded by Tracy. Thank you. I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, one, two, four, two, five, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Wesley Kegel.
I.
Casey Raboy.
I.
Annette Coonsey.
I.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
So moving on. We are to two, one, two point four, two, six. For consideration of approval of the following board policies. Administrative regulations and bylaws.
At the January board meeting, we brought to the board for discussion, um, this, these items for. As informational item, these policies and these administrative regulations. And we had. Dawn and I went over the summary of the changes and we had some discussion. And at that time. The board did not recommend any changes to the policies as they were. Provided last month. And so we're definitely willing to answer any other questions you might have about any of these. Policies or regulations, but no changes have been made since the first reading last month. Actually, I, I take that back. There's, yes, I need to highlight. We did make a change on. The grade level change. Donna, do you want to highlight the change we made for the before and school, after-school programs?
We just did the specific grade levels because we are a TK eight school district. We're, we don't go up to grade twelve.
Yeah, you should see that highlighted the strikeout on that. On five, one, four, eight, dot two, before and after school programs, you'll see the pink and the strikeout. A couple edits. When it was brought to you, it had nine, twelve on there. Just trying to be consistent. Most of our policies, we have taken that out. Any language related to high school. So we caught that after the fact and decided we would go ahead and be consistent and take that out. That's the only change.
All right. There. Any other questions, comments? Uh, seeing none. Can I get a motion? For two, one, two point four, two, six?
I'll make a motion for two, one, two point four, two, six.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Annette.
Thank you. I have a motion from Casey Raboy to approve item number two, one, two, four, two, six, seconded by Annette Coonsey, Wesley Kegel.
I.
Tracy Skinner.
I.
Catherine Harper.
I.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
And our last item is two, one, two point four, two, seven. Uh, board consideration of a two thousand twenty-three C S B delegate assembly. Ballot, subregion six B. My understanding is, there's way, two ways we can handle this. Number one is we can go ahead and make a motion and vote for the people or since nobody here is. On it. And nobody really wants to make a motion, we don't have to act on. On this. So my. My main question, does anybody know these people? That are up for this?
They need five. And so there's still three seats available. You could actually also, a trustee could write in as well if they wanted to.
Is somebody interested? In joining? Not yet. So. Yeah, in the past, we've had a board member in the past. John Gordon. That was heavily into this. So he always had the recommendations because he knew the, knew the people. So I have no idea who the people. People are. So I know there is. One person that has a resume in there. So. And. I have no. No. Let's say, uh. Yeah, we don't have to do.
You don't have to.
Nobody wants to make the motion, we can. Pass it over, so. Seeing, seeing. See, there's no motion. We will not act on. On that. Okay. Uh, moving on. Do we want to have? Administrators highlight?
Oh, absolutely. We can do that. We probably didn't. They, you know, they might have it online. We can, let's see. Principals, would you like to highlight something, something that's happening at your site in March? I have your calendars here. If you wanted to tell me what it is and I can look at the date. If you don't have your calendars in front of you. Anything else here? We have, Marengo, what's sunshine day? Oh, great. Okay. Very nice. Let's see. A, the twenty. No. Is it the twenty-fourth? This is. Maybe, is it February? Okay, I'm looking at March. Mother's Sun Challenge is on March twenty-fourth.
February twenty-fourth.
You know, Lake Canyon is having a pizza night. I thought that looked really in, that. Celebration of learning pizza night on the twenty-third of March. Oh, there's reading too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Valley Oaks is having a pancake breakfast at seven o'clock in the morning on March fourth, Saturday, March fourth. You want some pancakes?
I know.
Greer, let's see, anything pops out at me? I'm sorry, Greer included. It's February's calendar. Okay, so see. Anything coming up here? We're.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
A lot of ice.
Oh.
You know, at Fair Sight, our school readiness center, our school readiness coordinator, Monica Garcia. They're having the UC extension is offering nutrition classes. And I think they're full. They had thirteen to fifteen. Parents. So it's going to, I think it looks like five different Wednesdays. They're going to be, it's nutrition workshop. So that should be exciting.
And I will make sure we get Greer's March for you and email that to you, just so you have it for March. If there's anything you would like to attend.
And just remind everybody of McCaffrey. March twenty-second, musical show.
Oh, yes. Black light dance on the twenty. It'd be lots of fun. Yeah, it was excellent. Can I ask a question real quick? Um, would you, I'm still learning names and faces. Would you mind introducing yourselves and just saying where you, what your site is for me? Thank you. Yeah, I see. There's another one in March on your calendar too. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And now on to, have we got any public comment?
No, there are no requests for public comment at this time.
All right, thank you. And then pending agenda items. Is there anything anybody would like to see?
I just had a couple of general comments, not regarding an agenda item. So I'm not sure when I should insert those. Is now, okay. So I just had two things. I just want to say thank you. The historical chart that was added to the website is super helpful. I appreciate that getting on there. I think it'll be a really good tool moving forward. Very clear and understandable. So thank you for that. And then I also wanted to say thank you. I also attended the Fentanyl presentation and thought it was really good, very timely. And so. I think it's a topic that probably needs to go even to the broader community. So I took the person's card that gave that presentation. And so. Looking forward to maybe seeing if there's other opportunities that, you know, I could help with personally.
It was really good. I just, I, I think that we probably need to mandate that all middle schools and high schools provide that kind of awareness training to students right now. It was, it was really good. I went home and told my kids, you gotta have this at your school. Listen to this. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to share? The order? Seeing none. We will adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.